This is D. I'm checking my sound. Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you, but Fraser Park is muted.
Okay, sounds good, Mary. Yeah, that's good. I changed some things around on my computer a couple days ago, and I wasn't quite sure when my sound was looked out correctly. So thank you for that response.
I can hear you as well.
Thanks, all the way from up in... Where are you? I keep thinking-
Oregon. No worries.
How are you feeling?
Okay, I'm going to start this meeting. Welcome to the Fraser Park Public Utility District meeting for... This is our regular meeting agenda for Thursday, January ninth, 2025. We're starting the meeting at 4:01 PM. We do have an additional teleconference location, but we won't be using it. I was gonna say that, so that is not applicable on the agenda. And we're gonna start with the call to order. We're gonna start with a pledge to the flag. If anyone would please rise. Hey, ready to begin?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The roll call directors, Director Garcia-
Here.
Director Nyman-
Here.
Director Gibson-
Here.
Director Kelly-
Here.
And I'm Director Schoenberg, and I'm here as well. So that's item one. Item two, discussion vote to adjust agenda if necessary. Do we need to adjust anything on the agenda?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, hearing nothing. I'm gonna move on to item three, public comments. Are there any public comments for items not listed on the agenda? That's limited to five minutes, please. Thank you. Anyone for the public with any comments?
Hearing none?
No, hearing none. Report of officers. We're gonna start with President me. I don't have anything new to report other than I signed since the last meeting two claims, right? Since the last meeting, yeah.
Probably, yeah.
Yes, so that's all for me. Vice President-
Nothing this time.
Secretary?
I signed a bunch of minutes the other day.
Did you? I think I haven't been there ready for you to sign.
I'll be signing some morning and night.
Maybe. I gotta look, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, treasure.
Good job.
Um, we had to move forty thousand from capital improvement into operating.
Okay, and JPIA representative?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, so any questions on item four?
Yes, I have a question. The forty thousand that was moved, was that for-
We'll get it to Joe during the-
You'll get into it later?
Financial business.
Okay, were there any other transfers that occurred?
Other than the normal ones that go every month?
No.
Okay, the one I'm a little... I'm sorry, guys. I'm a little confused. On last month, you had said you had changed the amount that was going in for the USDA things. Are you still putting a total of ten thousand in on that?
That will be on the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Perfect. If for any reason we don't answer your questions, then ask it during that item, if you could. Okay, so anything else? Okay, item five, any board member initiatives? Okay, item six, managers' report.
We've had a slow month. Everything's going fine. I did have to... You guys remember for years we rented an oxygen and settling tank, and then I returned it a year or two ago. Ended up after I rented again. We have a couple jobs where you gotta have a cutting torch for that, and so I would teach the guys how to do that as well. Neither one has done it before, so other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you. Johnny, any questions for our general manager? Okay, how about our administrative assistant?
Um, no, everything's in the gentleman.
Okay, so nothing there. Item seven, standing committee reports, accounts payable committee.
We met. We went through invoices. We asked Deborah to cut checks, and we'll discuss everything under-
And we transferred forty thousand dollars to cover and have enough to cover payroll-
To pay it.
Coming up.
We had-
Operating costs. So operating costs, we were short.
We should talk about that in financials.
Yeah, it's all financial.
Yeah, order.
Okay, so any questions? Not on that, since that's gonna come up under another item for the accounts payable committee. Okay, how about the state update meetings next week?
Yes.
Or two, yeah, next... Quarterly financial committee-
We have not met.
Have not met yet for this quarter. Okay, item... Any questions for... Nothing really discussed. So item eight, discussion vote on changing the date for the quarterly financial committee.
Oh, so for this month, the AP meeting and the quarterly financial go on the same day.
Okay.
So what?
They're on the same day, which happens periodically.
Because the quarterly financial is the third Tuesday of the month, and the third Tuesday of the month is the AP meeting before our next board meeting. So they just happen-
Go inside.
To coincide because it was-
And I had an appointment because I had written it down, so there we go. So when can we do the quarterly? So what do we want to change? The quarterly financial, obviously, because we can't change the other one. Well, we should change the-
I mean, you could, if you think you'll finish it in one, you could just use the one, the second meeting one, or you can just reschedule this one and then see if you need the second one.
You'll have to tell me the date. I don't know who-
When is the second meeting? Yeah, I don't even have it written down.
Yeah, are the meetings?
We didn't have a 2025. I don't know where it-
Calendar.
No, well, I changed it to the little one.
You didn't give one for your office either?
No, I have one in my office, and then, I don't know, it's probably around here then.
Oh.
Okay, so where are we? One, two?
So it would be the fourth, right?
Yeah, it would have been the... Twenty-first is the day that they coincided.
And then the Fourth of February would be the second meeting?
Would be the second meeting, so you could just use the second meeting, or you could-
Can we do that? I'm okay with that. Are you okay with that, Deborah, the fourth for our financial or quarterly?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, that's at eleven o'clock. Okay, you're okay with that, Director Kelly?
Yeah, I'll make it work.
Okay.
I have no idea. I don't have my calendar. I don't, I can't think of anything now that day, so.
Good idea.
I don't know where it got misplaced.
Okay, so I have that in the calendar, and so nothing else on that. That date has been changed, and we will not be having a normal first quarterly financial. We will have it on our second meeting date, the Fourth, at eleven o'clock. Okay, so item nine, ad hoc committee reports, starting with the project committee.
Did you guys meet?
We haven't met since-
No, we haven't met.
Okay, so nothing for the project committee, financial committee.
We haven't met either.
Standby fee committee.
We haven't met again.
Okay, yeah, due the holidays. That got all off, so we'll be meeting again this month. Okay, financial business. Item ten, discussion vote on accounts payable and financial information. That's you, Deborah.
Okay, I would like to address... Before I talk about the disbursements, I would like to address the transfer. And just like in math, sometimes the result of an equation is affected by the order of operation. When we met on Tuesday at AP, I had not yet been able to perform the bank reconciliation, and so our book balance was very, very low. I want to point out that since then, I have done the bank reconciliation for the revenue operating, and after all of the disbursements for the bills and the payroll, we actually have a book balance of seventy-five thousand, sixty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. So-
So can I ask that we, since we took it out of capital, which is not maybe the best, I mean, but we had no choice, can we move that back in?
Are you asking me?
I know, I'm asking the directors.
The balance is thirty-five.
Right, but would thirty-five be enough until our next?
Yeah, because we should be getting-
Which didn't have anything until our next meeting, and then we have the twentieth, when all the money comes in from accounts, right?
Yeah.
So-
What happened to the little one?
Oh, the little one? Over there.
So are we okay moving that back in too, so we don't have to worry about that right now?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
You can do, yeah.
Yes, okay, that would be you, Terry, so.
Reverse it, okay.
Yes, reverse the transfer. So that answers that question, Joan. We're gonna put it back. Okay.
Okay.
Well, now we have our regular-
Let her keep talking.
Yeah.
Okay, so we prepared thirty-five checks out of the revenue operating account. We did void one check. The checks we prepared totaled forty-three thou... Excuse me, forty-three thousand, two hundred, fifty-nine dollars, eighty-one cents. The extraordinary disbursements include a JPIA benefit payment for nine thousand, seven dollars, forty-seven cents, a check to Ferguson for five invoices, for four thousand nine, totaling four thousand, nine hundred, fifty-one dollars, ninety-nine cents, the Edison bill for six thousand, four hundred, thirty-nine dollars, seventeen cents, and the state water resource annual water system fees for four thousand, eight hundred, ninety-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. Those were all the extraordinary disbursements.
Okay, Harley, any questions?
No, we also just, we had to get road base, so we did spend between the trucking, the trucking and hitting sand, road base, and the trucking cost cost us forty, five thousand dollars.
That was on the credit card, by the way.
Huh?
That was on the credit card.
No.
Charge account.
No, it's charge account.
Oh.
But no, because, well, because it's two different things, so you have to pay...
You pay for the road base to a different company, and then you have to pay the trucking, the trucker who brings the road base up. So just, yeah, I just wanted people to be aware of that, so.
Thank you.
Road base is expensive.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we pay our bills.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call directors. Director Garcia-
Aye.
Director Nyman-
Aye.
Director Kelly-
Aye.
Director Gibson-
Aye.
Director Schoenberg is an aye. That motion passes five zero zero, and so we are paying our bills. Yes, Director.
Just to answer Joan's question, we did change the USDA payment amount to eleven thousand, eleven thousand dollars. And so that's just to coincide for our upcoming in April payment for our interest and principal that comes-
It actually went down a little bit because we had estimated higher, and when we went back to the bond book, it actually was a bit lower by whatever that was.
Well, we were putting in twelve, twelve thousand, six hundred, so it was down a thousand, sixteen hundred dollars.
Right, and we had extra money in there.
Yeah.
So basically, what we did, since the account had so much extra money in there, we figured for the year what-
Even, yeah.
Because of having to always transfer money, we corrected it so that we would be keeping a couple grand more a month in our revenue operating. But, so that answers your question.
Does you have any other questions?
Yeah, what I was trying to confirm is you were previously putting an additional amount in for the replacement fund. So you're putting X amount in for the payment, and then some extra money on top of that for the replacement. Are you putting anything into the replacement?
Yes, we put five thousand a month in there.
And that did not change.
And we're putting like twenty-five hundred extra. None of that changed. That's a monthly thing right now.
And all that's based on the calculation-
Sorry, you were over talking each other. You're putting five thousand in, and then approximately an extra twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks, guys.
Is based on calculations from the bond book and what we need to have in there.
No, not the general fund.
And we're still putting five thousand into the general fund every month.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the payback money that we took borrowed out of that fund. Okay, so moving on to the Christmas.
Sorry, Lisa, I'm confused. When I ask if you're putting money into the replacement account, the USDA replacement account-
Yes, we already talked about that.
Is that the same thing as what you guys call the general fund?
No.
No, the general fund is an account that we had previously to all the bond books, and we have kept that separate, and we have taken money out of that to make our, to make our payroll into the revenue operating, and we've taken significant amounts out. And so we're building that back up because we're putting, we're replacing the money that we transferred over, because we did like fifty thousand here, fifty thousand there, and so we were down to something like seventy-five thousand. So now we're like at eighty-some, eighty-some thousand dollars, and we're putting five thousand dollars a month back into that account.
That account originally had a little over two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, so approximately seventy-five hundred's going into the replacement fund, and then five thousand is going into what I would call the pre-USDA general fund.
Yeah, exactly.
Gotcha.
And eleven thousand is going into the USDA payment fund.
That's a lot of money. Okay, thanks, guys.
Believe me, we know.
Okay, so any other questions? All right, then we're going to go to our closed session. Oral announcement prior to the closed session, government code five four nine five seven point seven A, a representative of the legislative body to orally announce the items being discussed in closed session prior to any closed session meeting. Item eleven, closed session pursuant to government code five four nine five seven, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, government code five four nine five six point nine D one, Fraser Park Public Utility District versus CNC Elite Properties LLC et al., Kern County Superior Court, case number B C V twenty-four one zero zero one nine nine. And item twelve, closed session pursuant to government code five four nine five seven, conference with real property negotiators, government code five four nine five six point eight, property carousels that we're negotiating, two five six dash zero seven zero dash five four, two five six dash zero seven zero dash five five, and two five six dash five two zero dash thirteen. Agency negotiators, Lisa Schoenberg, Barbara Nyman, and Dee Jasper. The negotiating parties are Jeff French and Emily Wainwright. Under negotiations, the price in terms of payment. And with that, we are going to go into our closed session. I don't believe it's gonna be long, which is informational, so.
Excuse me.
Oh, goodbye, Deborah.
Bye, Deborah. Thank you.
Okay, have a good evening.
You too.
Good night.
Okay, so the time is four twenty.
Good night, you can stay here. Glad to be able to stay.
You too. Wild horse has been riding around.
Good.
Good.
Joan, I can hear a little bit of backbeat, just making sure you're muted.
Okay, I think we're back and you can.
Okay, everyone, I believe we are back. We are returning from closed session. The time is four thirty-five. We'll make the oral announcement following closed session. Government Code five four nine five seven point one A. The legislative body of any local agency shall publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention on that action of every member present thereon. We did not vote, there were no motions, I was informational only with no action taken. We are back in open session and we are now on item thirteen, discussion vote update on Fraser Park Lake of the Wood consolidation planning project thirteen A. Discussion vote review of the project timeline and budget.
Want me to report what I know on that, Lisa?
Sure.
Sure.
All right, uh, talk to Ruben, uh, he said there, uh, the, you know, the continue to get good news is these staff, as the staff reviews our requests, they, uh, there are no issues. Uh, you know, it appears to be moving along very well. So it, it looks like the only hang up is that it is right now, uh, being reviewed by the legal team. And, uh, there's, um, I, apparently a checklist that they go through. And I guess very, very methodically do that. And he said he really doesn't have any control of that. He does, uh, tell his management, you know, now and then that we, we really need to move that ahead because we're out of money. And he, he said that he was going to do that again. And see if he can get the legal team to move it on out of that review and, and get it back to upper management and get the thing, uh, funded. Yeah, that's all I have on that.
Any questions on thirteen A? Thirteen B, discussion vote on acquisition development of well number eight. We did talk about that a little bit in closed session. Uh, is there anything in open session that you can discuss, D?
Only that we have possession of it and, uh, we're, we're going to, uh, stake it out and probably do a little bit of improvements on the site in the next several weeks.
Questions on thirteen B? Thirteen C, discussion vote on the acquisition development of well number nine and additional booster tank site properties. Certificate of Compliance Lot Line Adjustment and Property Appraisals. I believe we do have a vote um, that we're going to take on this item, which has to do with, um, approving money to, uh, do titles, um. Someone want to discuss that?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, authorize D to run, run title two, title reports.
On three?
Huh?
There may be three?
No, so how many title reports, D? Is it two?
Two, yes.
Yeah, uh, to run two title reports, uh, for the, uh, certificate of compliance and, yeah.
Because we only need a title report for the actual land that we will be taking. We're not worried about their lot line adjustments. That's not gonna be our, possession, correct?
We have done the lot lines.
You mean on?
I know, but they would pay for that, I know.
Yeah, we, we, uh.
I'm, I'm wrong.
We do the certificate of compliance first, correct, D?
Right, yeah, we have to move ahead with certificate of compliance. That, that takes a few, uh, steps. We have to have the grant deed and that'll be shown in the title report. Uh, then we have to have the landowners, um, you know, sign the documents and that they're in agreement with, with this thing and, and that we also have to get the, uh, purchase agreement put together and agree to as well. So there are a few steps there and we can go ahead with the title.
I'm trying to answer Director Kelly's question and because they already own the properties where we're going to do the lot line adjustment, we don't need a title for that. We only need a title for the little break off property that we're using for the, um, well itself.
Actually, uh, you, you actually have to have title reports for, for both because, uh, because the county wants to be assured that nothing has changed between the last time that the, you know, the, the title report was done and now, and sometimes things. Sometimes things.
Then we would need more than two.
We need two. Yeah, we have.
We need two right now, correct?
Yes.
How do we need over two?
Why do we need two?
Yeah.
Title reports are only good for about ninety days. And the county wants to make sure that there have been no changes since the last title report that was done. And now, and an example of that might be somebody takes a loan out on the property. And now there's a lien on the property, so it's not free and clear. And that will show up in the title reports. Uh, anything that changes, uh, somebody puts a pipeline across it and there was an easement document signed. Um, you know, I'm pretty sure that didn't happen with this property, but those are typical examples of things that happen, uh, where you have another party that has to approve the, the action that you're taking and the certificate of compliance. So, uh, so the county, uh, you know, wants title reports that are current.
Director Iman.
So D, uh, I want to understand this. So, so, uh, when you're getting these two title reports, it's for the certificate of compliance. They're only good for ninety days, so you'll be doing that work. Now, when it comes to the lot line adjustment, are we gonna have to get another title report later?
Yep. Well, what we do is we would get it updated. And, um, so that, yeah, that would be what we would do. What, what I suggest is let's get authorization to do it. And I'm gonna hold off until I know that our timing will be such that they won't timeout. And we can make our application to the county once we have the property purchased. We've got signatures by the current owners. And we have the grant deed all prepared with a legal description, the plat made. So that all of that gets turned into the county. And, you know, the county takes time reviewing these darn things too. So, you know, we want to get our title report just about done, right about the time we're ready to submit. Uh, so, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna amend that, that, uh, no one has seconded it yet. So I make a motion that, uh, we, uh, authorize D to get the title reports when it's appropriate. When all documentation is in line to do the certificate of compliance and the lot line adjustment and so that, so that we don't have to do extra, extra, uh,
Title searches.
Title searches.
Can you name for what property?
For, for, this is for, uh, well number nine and for the Bear Court property. I'll second that.
Okay, well, the motion is second. Is there any other discussion? And, uh, okay, so, uh, we'll call directors, Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director Iman.
Aye.
Director Gibson.
Aye.
Director Kelling.
Aye.
And Director Shumbers, an aye. That motion passes five zero zero. So we, uh, will be, um, okaying basically, uh, D to go ahead and when appropriate to, uh, get those title reports.
Handle business.
Okay, moving on to thirteen D, discussion vote on project, uh, MSR, quote draft, blah, blah, blah. And LAFCO, I believe this is mostly a LAFCO question at this point. Um, do you have anything to add to thirteen D?
Uh, just, uh, only that the, uh, the notice of exemption, you know, we're using the common sense exemption. And that has been filed with, by the district, with the county and with the state clearinghouse. So the timing has started and we've got about thirty days or thirty-five or comments that anybody might want to make on our, increasing our sphere of influence. So we're just kind of waiting until the end of that time period so that we don't, so that we are authorized to do what we want to do. Then what we'll do is then that, those, uh, copies of those certificates, uh, the, the notice of exemptions, uh, and their dates that they were filed will be included with the application for the increase in the SOI and all that will go to the LAFCO.
We are the lead agency on that.
Mm-hmm, yep, we're the lead agency.
Okay, any questions on thirteen D?
I have a question. What, what, what was the date that this was filed? So I know when the thirty to thirty-five days starts.
Um, um, I guess Tiff, uh, Tiff, you, um, know what those dates are.
Joey, um, the state clearinghouse was maybe the, the thirtieth or thirty-first of December and then Johnny filed the other one.
On, uh, the sixth of January sixth. No.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, January sixth.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thirteen E is still tabled, the memorandum of understanding until later in this project. Thirteen F, discussion vote on Lake of the Woods projects consolidation. That is Lake of the Woods. Take it away.
Hey guys, so our final claim and change order, I'm glad you guys can hear me, thank you. Um, final change order and, and claim were submitted on January sixth. Um, nothing new on the five million dollar grant. Well number four, nothing new. Um, blending station, so far, I think I shared with you guys in December, it was two point five and two point seven for the blending station for nitrates. Um, overall wells from November twenty twenty-four to December, the end of December were down two point eight to seven point four. But from the beginning of January, they were up eight point seven to twenty point five. And since January of twenty twenty-three, they are up seventeen point seven and fifty point five. So those are the highs and lows. So we're still doing good and I'm hoping the next few months we'll start accumulating some and we'll pray to the heavens that, and Mother Nature, that we get some rain. Not just for us, but so call.
Exactly.
All right, guys, that's it. Do you have any questions?
Johnny, do you have any numbers for your wells?
Levels, my, our levels are stayed, stays, uh, even for everything. Nitrates, uh, static level, pumping level. I could go grab them at the file cabinet, but they haven't changed from last month or the month before, the month before.
Okay, so your, your nitrates and your fluorides are good. I didn't think you had the ability to check your static levels and your drawdown levels. Did that change?
Depends on what, what you're talking about. Uh, we, we, hey, you can check the levels on well six. Static and pumping, well five, we cannot, but in well five, we have the nitrates. With the analyzer on it, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Okay, so at well six, I thought the machine, whatever it is that does that checks the levels was broken, so you weren't checking it. When you have a chance, if you could just let me know what six is, I would appreciate it.
No, manual is, the, the manual one broke. We've been using it in acoustic ever since I told you the last levels. I'll tell you right now what they are.
Thanks, Johnny. Or you can just text me, it's fine.
The same as last month, though, it's, uh, forty-five, uh, static, ninety-five pumping.
I'm sorry, something static? I couldn't hear that.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Ninety-five pumping.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Item G, discussion vote on claims and payouts. That's going to happen after next week. Uh, so we don't have anything on that and we don't have self-help here today.
Well, we have Carlos is here.
Oh, Carlos is here now.
But but basically.
Yeah. Sorry, I jumped on a little late, but yeah, we don't have claims until next next one. But we can't, we can't submit a claim anyways until until we get it approved. Until we get the budget.
But 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 you're gonna go ahead and continue to, uh, put put together the claim, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll have, we'll, we'll have a claim that we review, but we can't submit it.
Right, so we'll be looking at the claim during the state update meeting, but we will not be able to get reimbursement or actually physically submitted.
Right.
Until we have approval on everything, our budget. Okay, uh, thank you, Carlos. Uh, any other questions on that? Item fourteen, discussion vote update on PPED meter replacement project, emergency well supply project, fourteen A. Discussion vote update on well number seven. Where are we at with the final capping fence and item two?
The abandoning the well has been done. The fencing has been done. Uh, today we received some parts. Um, Curtis came up to account. Um, we didn't receive any of the big ticket items, the the air conditioner heater, uh, meter, whatever, but, uh, some of the parts have been stolen by Bruff or other projects. So they're, they were like, whoa, well, let's we'll have to order something to get them for you. I said, no, we don't need them.
Right.
I said, we don't need them. If you have to order them, it makes no sense because we're only taking things, stuff you can't return. So Curtis reiterated that to them. So as far as though that stuff goes, we're gonna dodge some of that cost.
Oh, good.
But we still don't have account on the rest of the stuff that's coming.
And we just need to make sure that they remove the cost for the items.
Curtis has it all.
Yeah, he's on top of it.
He's definitely on top of it.
Okay, excellent. So that's actually good news that they used stuff that they couldn't use. Okay, uh, anything else on that? Okay, how about, so it's almost, almost the the all, uh, fourteen B, discussion vote update on the meter replacement.
Bruff has been out here. They did the most, the last meter was the most difficult plumbing wise, which was the trailer park. Um, I believe they're all done with everything now. Um, the district still has to put new vaults that I ordered for the the trailer park because the vault that was there was old wood falling in lid and everything. So I ordered new vaults while they had to dig, excavate part of it anyway to put the meter in. So we'll set them, set that next week. And then we should be done with the meter, um, project.
And so there were still a couple of meters that hadn't been done yet.
There was, there was, like, ten three quarter and ten one inch. They've done, they did all those.
Okay.
They did the school and they did the trailer park, which is the last.
And the stuff on the the weird little ones that they could have had trouble with, like on walnut and.
They did everything that was supposed to be done.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
But now we just have the the business ones that we have to do.
And we've already done a good majority of those. We just have about seven or eight more two inch that we need to do and um, but yeah, but rough construction for this line item, they're I think they're done, yeah.
And then you're ordering like monthly a couple of the two inch?
I I just did like one last month and.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just.
It's pacing.
Pacing it out, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that or? Yeah, let's move on to four, uh, fourteen C, discussion vote on claims and payouts again. That will happen next week, but we also have the same.
No, we don't have the same problem.
Okay, that one's okay?
That's the one that we, we, we moved money from the consolidation to from the contingency into that those areas. And so we'll be able to submit them once we get the, uh, the claims.
Okay, right. I forgot that we got approval on that. Okay, so, uh, item fourteen D, uh, well, any other questions on claims and payouts? Now, fourteen D, discussion vote update on bridge loan requests and payments. Yes, Director Iman.
Well, we did, we did one for eighteen thousand for Bruff. And so we still have, I think, quite a bit of money left in in the bridge loan that we can request. And once we get, like you said, this finishing up on well seven, we get that request for unified, we can submit that. Also, when Bruff submits whatever they completed here, then we can, we can submit that also and get them paid and get it submitted for for reimbursement.
Okay, any other questions on fourteen? Yeah, here right now, item fifteen, discussion vote on pipeline replacement project, fifteen A. Engineering and design, I don't believe we've moved forward at all on, well, we were waiting. Did we, did we hear from, it sort of morphs into B as well, but did we get a final okay from Jesse Daliwah?
No, and today Curtis, uh, me and Curtis talked about that and I need to email Jesse and let him know that Ryan had indicated that he had already done, did his review, so we're just waiting on his and try to get a timeline from Jesse, so.
And I, uh, I contacted Jesse as well today and, uh, did not get a reply. But, uh, you know, right before we, the holidays, uh, Jesse told me that they thought that they would have the report done before Christmas. Uh, we've not received it yet. And so we're checking with them to see if we can get that done. And, you know, then we can revise the plans and get those approved.
Yeah, and that's something that you guys gotta stay on top of Jesse because it it's gonna, it's gonna take a while to get those approved if we don't stay on top of them.
Yeah, he's had him for a year, I think. That's quite a while.
Well, what, you guys are gonna follow up and then when we have our meeting next week, we will push him again. Because we'll have the state update meeting next week.
Okay, uh, fifteen B, kind of along those same lines, uh, the project's application. All we're really waiting on is.
Ask Carlos. Does he know?
Carlos, is there anything else that we're not completed?
Uh, no, we just gotta wait. It it's just a waiting game from from now on, from here on out until the state says uh, we need this information from you or 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 we're good to go.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on fifteen? Okay.
Well, we do follow up on them occasionally to say, hey, um, you know where we're at?
Remember us?
Remember us?
Well, every month when we have the state update meeting, we're on.
Yeah.
You can't push them too hard. I mean, they're all powerful. I mean, they're.
No, I know that.
All powerful. So, well, I mean, they could shut us down, they could approve it, they could tell us, you know, I mean, they we have no leverage over them, other than please be nice and review our stuff.
Yeah, do your job.
Yeah.
Okay, move on.
Generally, the review takes, uh, six, six to nine months to a year. And sometimes longer, so we just gotta be patient.
Okay, hurry up and wait. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, nothing else, right? I keep trying to move on. Okay, item sixteen, discussion vote on rate study. So.
That's Carlos.
Carlos and Tiffany? Ms. Carlos?
Yeah, when, when, whenever, whenever we get ready to to start it, um, we're, we're gonna wanna have a, well, I don't know if you guys wanna form a a, an ad hoc, so we can just talk about the rate study with the ad hoc instead of having to talk with the whole board. Um, yeah, so we wanna have a, we, we're probably gonna wanna have a meeting with with, uh, with the ad hoc, if you guys form one or somebody from the district to talk about what what you guys wanna get out of this, uh, rate study. If you guys wanna be, you know, aggressive and put money aside or or what, so uh, that that's something that 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 Jeffrey, the guy that's gonna do the rate rate study, he's gonna wanna set that up. Uh, and I'll get with him and see when he wants to start. Uh, and then I'll let you guys know uh, when he wants to meet to discuss um, stuff about the rate study.
Well, they, we can form an ad hoc, but we can't even begin to discuss aggressiveness or non-aggressiveness until they start to do their study and let us know where we are financially with all of their their calculations. What they, I mean, the whole purpose of doing it is to look at our stuff and then tell us what they think we need to do, so um, we can't just hit the, hit the beginning of it, tell them.
But the thing. Yeah, but the thing is, Johnny, that that, uh, we, we did that with other systems. We've done that with other systems where we, we look at their stuff and we say, hey, you guys need to, you guys need to set up, set money aside because you guys don't have nothing. But then the system comes back and tells us, no, you, we know what, we just wanna we just wanna do the rate study to, we just wanna do a rate increase to to keep us afloat a- at this moment. We don't wanna put too much aside. So that, that's, that's why we wanna kind of gauge what where you guys are at in that, in that sense. But then he will look at, at, at all your financials and say, hey, you know, this is where you're at, this is what you need to do. But then, you know, he, he just wants to get a feel for it of of where you guys are thinking.
Director Iman, uh, the only thing, um, uh, as far as when we get started, I, I think we need to just keep in mind how long the rate study is gonna take him and and the meetings we're gonna have to have because we definitely want this approved, uh, so that next January, um, we can have the increase in place by next January, starting those five years. So um, so I think sooner is probably better.
Well, I would like to also throw out there, uh, something that I I realized. Uh, me personally, I I have some misgivings on the standby fee, the way it's structured, the way it has to pass. But I think that if the two were coming in too close together, then people are gonna be saying, but you just raised rates and you just tried to, even though they're two totally separate critters. If we do them too close in conjunction with each other, it's gonna cause too much public outcry. That's my personal belief.
I'm not sure if it would because the rate or the rate study is gonna affect everyone paying a bill. The standby fee is only going to affect those people, property tax.
Do you think anybody in this town, uh, waits and gets any of the facts? Have you ever seen anybody in this town know anything about nitrates, the well drill, any topic we have where they actually know that there's separate issues?
Have you looked on Facebook lately and seen that they're still talking about rates being too high?
Yeah, so I'm just saying that, that when they start complaining about the one and then we hit them with another one, they're gonna be it's, I mean, we do wanna get started sooner rather than later, but we don't wanna start at exactly the same time.
Perfect. With a perfect scenario that just happened and there is still happening where people are running out of water to even fight the fires that are happening. Well, we have to wake them up. They can live wherever they want to, but they're gonna live here, they gotta pay for the water.
Agreed.
I mean, I would say that's what, high on the list of things you wanna have. Any of us that are homeowners here, without water, our homes are.
Nothing.
Worthless.
I agree, but, but the way the, the rate study has been explained is after we started with the standby fee.
Right.
The standby fee is highly unlikely, if we, in my opinion, that we will get people voting for us to increase their taxes.
Right, I agree.
If I had it to do over, I would have done the regular rate study first, the standby fee later to get the money we need to operate now is, but since we can't do that, I just think we don't wanna have public information meetings of the two running in concurrence with each other is all I'm bringing up.
Well, can we switch?
I think time wise and money wise for the projects, I don't think we can do that, no.
No.
Anyway, that's my, uh, conscience worth.
All right.
So should we add it, create an ad hoc for standby, I mean, for the rate increase, uh, on the next board meeting?
It would have to be on another agenda.
Yeah, so the next board meeting?
Yeah, it's toward on there on this meeting.
Well, although it's twenty, I guess, I guess we could do it under twenty.
Oh, cool.
If, if you need, wanted to.
Okay, yeah. We'll, we'll do it under twenty.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so anything else on the rate study until we get to item twenty? Did you say something?
Uh, no, I got nothing. I don't have anything.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Carlos. I think Carlos could go.
Thank you, Carlos.
Yeah, I think, I think we're good and you'll find that we'll talk this evening about an ad hoc.
And indeed, indeed, go to if you'd like.
All right, thank you. Bye.
Good night, gentlemen.
But you can stay with us. We like having you on.
I'll listen for a little while longer. I'm planning on be here, being here anyway, so.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, moving on to item seventeen, discussion vote on standby fee assessment.
So I have an update. So since we, um, approved NBS to start with some of the outreach, um, Sandra emailed and is asking the board if we would be willing to postpone. Not a long time, but we were originally going to have the resolution of intention meeting on January twenty-third. She recommends postponing that to March twentieth so that we have time to do the outreach because otherwise we're already due to send ballots out at the end of January.
Yeah, I thought it was a great idea.
That's crazy.
So I, you know, if you're in agreement, I can let her know. It's just as long as Kern County agrees because it's gonna go a little past their desired timeline.
I think we should maybe do that as a formal motion, though.
Yeah, because the only hope we have is if the outreach works, that's the only hope we have with that.
So I'll entertain that.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll move that we, uh, postpone our, um, outreach and.
Not the outreach, but the.
The fee of the.
Resolution of intention meeting.
Resolution of intention meeting till March twentieth.
And then the public hearing would be on May twenty-second. So that would be right. This Kern County has their timeline of when they want everything done. And they're very, uh, they want it done way in advance of when they need it. They don't need it finalized till August, but they want you to get it in early so they can do their job. Wait, hold on, so they can do their job early? But it's not a hard and fast deadline, so she's gonna ask Kern County if they're willing to wait.
On March twentieth, I want, gentlemen.
March twentieth is our state update meeting, so that means we would have two meetings on that day?
No, it would be part of it. We do it, they're, they purposely schedule it for a meeting we already have.
But that's the state, the ad hoc.
We do our state update, so it, there's nothing we can do.
Oh, March twentieth is the state update meeting.
Yeah, it's fine.
But we can make it for the twenty seventh.
We should make it for the twenty seventh.
That's on, and then we have our water board meeting on the twenty seventh.
That would happen.
Yeah, it's supposed to be with the water board meeting.
Okay. So change, change that to the twenty seventh.
And the other day.
No, I, I've got plans for the twenty seventh. I'll be out of town.
Yeah, but it's a regular meeting, so.
Yeah, but he's part of the ad hoc.
The one we haven't made yet?
No. You're already on that.
The rate study.
Study, the, uh.
The standby.
Standby fee.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, the standby fee. So you're gonna be out of town for that.
I'll see if I can move it, but that's why I made it three months ago.
Can you take the meeting over the phone?
I may, I may, I may be able to.
Or the thirteenth? Instead of doing it a week further back, we do it a week earlier?
I might suggest you can also just give, provide, you know, any, any information that you need.
Why don't we do it on the thirteenth? If he is going away on the twenty-seventh, I don't think that's a huge difference.
Good, good, thank you. I'll add that right now.
Okay, and so then what is the second number? It changes too, right? May twenty-two?
May twenty-two would be the public hearing.
And that's incongruent with our.
Meeting as well.
Right, and that, and that's a public hearing?
Yeah, and if that's gonna take a long time, it may be better to do it on a different day. Especially if we're gonna have public because then we'd have to move it.
I would say Friday is Saturday, or or you could do it on the twenty ninth, the following week.
Yeah, why don't we do it on the twenty ninth? Which is a normal.
May twenty-ninth.
Thursday, but later, you know, not at four PM so that people have a chance to come home from work.
Yeah, so you would have to do it like.
Six or seven.
At seven o'clock, because people complain about the six.
Yeah. Yeah.
They can't get here.
We'll do that on the seven.
They don't come anywhere. Yeah, I'll clear it with her first. So you're saying at seven P M?
People come so often to the meetings that you should have seen the amount of dust on those chairs.
I know, I know, but it's.
I think we have to give the opportunity. Just saying that uh.
But the, the thing is, then if somebody did wanna come, they're gonna go.
May twenty ninth at seven P M if it's approved.
May twenty nine.
Yeah, May twenty nine.
Okay, it's. Questions, information on these.
Okay, so he, he, he had to do a motion, so. He was in the middle of a motion.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Well, I think that we.
I made a motion that we, that we, uh, uh, extend the public hearing to. Um, uh, what was it?
Well, we're pushing it back two months essentially.
We're, we're pushing it back two months and that the, the, the public meeting, yeah, May twenty ninth. At seven o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, I would, we don't know that.
Okay, so.
It's not hard and bad.
Say, why do we need a motion to, to move these dates?
Just to agree to move it.
Okay, I just make a motion that we agreed to postpone the uh public hearing and the. Uh, public meeting for two months.
Is there a second or to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? We'll call directors, Director Garcia, Director Nyman, Director Gibson, Director Kelling. Director Schobert is an I, that motion passes five zero zero. We will be postponing the. Uh, standby fee uh meetings for two months. If, 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 if it's approved. Okay, so, uh, anything else on seventeen? Okay, item eighteen, discussion vote on the district's record retention policy.
You figure we on now?
Well, we are on page, hold on, twelve.
We'll catch twelve. We've, no, we've done it.
What is that? We'd like to be able to say, yeah, we've gone harder.
Okay, so let's uh, let's speed through this, so, uh, meter reading books. Okay, but if we have such a thing, years retained instead of seven, I think we just need to change the, um. I'm sorry, I need to remember what these are for a second.
It's advisable.
Okay, let's just change that to yes. So seven, yes.
Okay.
Minutes of board meetings, that's permanent, and yes, we uh store them before we ever. Destroyed, which we wouldn't be, but since it's permanent. Month, month ends, so we don't need to change that. Month end reports. Years retained currently ten and a yes, we, uh, anybody have an issue with that?
No, I, I think those are pretty easy.
News releases, two years and let's put a yes. Newsletters, two years and we had them and a yes. Obsolete job descriptions, seven years and a yes. OSHA equipment certificates, life plus five years and a yes.
Yeah, we can everything a yes.
Payment receipts, ten years currently and a yes.
Just keep going.
Payroll authorization and life plus ten years and it's already got a yes. Payroll check copies, ten years plus a yes. Payroll registers, ten years plus a yes. Policies, rules, regulations, ordinances, life plus five years and a yes. Stop me if you have an issue with any of these. Public hearings is permanent with a yes, so no big deal. P U C reports, uh, ten years plus a yes. Change that A to a Y.
We put it all Y's.
Yes, we're gonna put all Y's, except for the ones that are, um.
Just let her keep going.
Okay, so purchase request order, uh, A T plus seven and a yes. What is A T?
We're gonna have purchase orders.
Active, so active time for that, uh, and plus seven, so that's fine. Record and, uh, yes, change it to a yes. Record, which is the subject and denied public. Record, which is the subject and denied public records request. R I D is after request denial plus three years and a yes. Record destroyed, authorization's records, that's permanent, and O C D, it never goes away. We can't destroy the original, so that's fine. Uh, rights of way easements, encroachments, permanent and never destroyed. Sanitary surveys, ten years and a yes. Security deposit registers, five years and a yes. And service order authorization is active, uh, plus two years and a yes. Any issues with any of those? No, do we wanna try the next page? Or should we wait? Okay, so we did another page, we, we're, we're checking along, we only have a very long bit to go.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I didn't change any minds, I'll have to copy that off of somebody next time. Remind you when I tell you you're on twelve and I'm all.
Worries. You just gotta put yes, that's the only thing you did.
That's all you did.
Okay, so, um, moving on, we are now on. Unless there's any other questions on that, we're on new business, does anyone wanna take a brief recess? Okay, well then, uh, item nineteen, discussion review of new laws for twenty twenty five.
So the first one that, I'm only giving you laws that pertain to S. So the first one is your social media accounts. If you post as if you're an authorized representative of the district, you cannot block comments. What's that mean? Even if it's your personal social media account.
If I have a Facebook and I don't like what people are saying, I could block any comments being able to come in, you cannot do that if you do water company business.
If you're doing water, but it's only if it's water company business on your personal account.
No, if you use your personal account at any point for water company business, you can no longer block comments, period. Not, it's not dependent on your post.
But don't use uh your personal stuff for water company business.
I never have.
But what does that entail? Does that entail if somebody makes a comment on my personal. Page that I don't want them to make and says, you guys haven't come over here to fix my or.
On your personal page?
You cannot block it on your personal social.
So if I have, as they've done, friends who decide to say some weird stuff to me. Then it will affect me even if it's on my personal page.
Isn't that only if you use your personal page for business at some point?
I was gonna say, how's that water company business? What's that? I'm sorry.
Isn't that only if you use your, your personal social media for water company business? If you have not, not used it for personal business, I mean.
If you don't talk about water company.
But if you haven't answered them.
Then you're using it for water, you're, you're.
If you ever said, this has nothing to do with my page, is that an answer?
No, no, if you're answering as if a representative of.
As a representative.
So if somebody says.
If I say, please bring this to the water company, that's.
So just ignore them.
Probably not.
So just ignore them.
Like you saying, as, as president of the board, I have experience as.
Then it's not, then you can't block anybody anymore. Okay, next. Okay, here's a nasty one, and I think we need to ask Alan about it.
Can I ask a quick question? Is that also include, and it's only if you block it or if other people block it? Because does that include something like, uh, Frazier Mount's bulletin board?
No, you can't block comments. If they block it, that's their. You can't block it on your own page. So all, this one's called all local agencies. Must present status of job vacancies at a public hearing.
What?
What?
Yes, so the new A B two twenty five sixty ones requires special districts to take the following actions. Special districts must present the status of vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts. At a public hearing at least once per fiscal year. At the hearing, the district is required to identify changes to policies and recruitment efforts that create hiring obstacles. Wherever, moreover, if the special district adopts an annual budget during the fiscal year. The special district must present the status of vacancies before adopting your budget.
So I think what we need to do is have that added when we have our review done on our employee handbook. And have that added by the attorney, how we're supposed to handle that, right?
Yeah, I would get, get his.
So that means when we go and we say, okay, we gotta do our fiscal budget once a year, and this is our new budget.
We have to have a public meeting.
We actually have to have a public.
Before you can adopt your annual budget, you have to have a public hearing talking about.
Job vacancies and recruits.
Yeah, job vacancies and recruiting.
And what happens if we're approving that on a five year basis as opposed to an annual?
Again, this is, they don't write details into laws. Those get defined later as people sue. That's the way California state law works.
So if I stroke out and you're recruiting a new uh general manager, you have to talk about that in a public meeting beforehand, before you pass the budget.
Well, at least once a year, we have to talk about. It's like an annual report.
But isn't this a public meeting? So it's not like.
A public hearing, and public hearings have different laws, meaning forty five day notice, publication.
So if you don't know if someone's leaving, you just need to have a policy in place for if someone is.
No, it's, it doesn't matter if anybody's coming or going once a year, you just have to give an annual report about what.
That's what I'm saying, so that's a policy in place.
Oh, I was saying, we put, we put a ad in the paper and, for, for a, a worker, and we hired a, a, a person. This is how we did it, and that's our report.
Yeah.
And we do it in a public hearing.
We have to do it in a public.
But if you hire somebody in January and your annual hearing is in December, you just reported out in December.
That means we're gonna have to, to do the clubhouse once a year.
No. The clubhouse isn't a requirement for a hearing. The clubhouse is only if we think we're gonna have a big response from people. And we need more room, but we shouldn't just exclude that anyway, cuz we have no internet there, and now everything is based off of Zoom. So we could have whatever hearings we want, right? Because you can see that we're not overwhelmed with people.
So we could do a specific date and, and announce.
No, we just can put the chairs out and, yeah, nobody's gonna care about our hiring policy.
And as long as it's on the agenda, they can come on Zoom as well.
Yeah, the public hearing, we can just.
So Tiffany, we'll get back to you after we get something from Alan.
That makes sense happening at the end of the year, so that you can review what you did that year.
But we don't do our budget at the end of the year.
It just says once per fiscal year.
Can we do whatever we want?
We can do it whenever we want, just make sure you do it before you pass the fiscal year budget. That's what I'm saying.
So you, you already gonna reach out to Alan on, on that?
Yeah, probably.
Then it would have to be in July.
Yeah, next.
Next, this changes to the Brown Act, so this is regarding remote meetings and closed sessions. So it used to be where you couldn't do more than three consecutive months. On, you know, the Zoom with the audio and the video, if you chose to meet for emergency or just pause. So they changed it, so now it's five times, you can't do it more than five times per year.
That's a board member.
A board member. So currently, members of brown eyed bodies may not appear remotely for a period of more than three consecutive months. So that's the current law, and that's only if you're using the emergency circumstance or the just pause.
So like if you're sick, that's emergency circumstance.
If you, yeah, if you want to, and you still wanna meet.
So it was three, now it's five?
It was three in a row, now they're just saying five.
But we haven't used that at all because you have to have your camera and mic on the entire time, you can't go to the restroom or you have to stop the.
Yeah, yeah, so we haven't.
We haven't plugged that, yeah.
So here's a new one, um.
But we still can, that, like, like, where she's had. That's a different law? Okay, I just wanna understand.
Thank you for having my back.
Yeah.
So there's a new closed session item, so now you can, it used to be that, um. Under current law, agents may meet in closed session to discuss threats to the security of public buildings. Essential public services or public right of access to facilities. So they're talking about physical threats. Now you can hold a closed session to talk about cybersecurity. Yay, so we don't have to put it all out there. So that was a good one.
Yeah.
And then the last one that I wanted to bring to your attention was. So this, um, applies to employees, so it'll have to change our employee handbook. So it used to be for a employee to take personal family leave, they had to use up. Um, at least two weeks of their vacation time before they qualify for paid family leave. Now, um. It says employers can no longer require employees to use vacation time before accessing paid family.
You know what I read about that? I always had the assumption that paid family leave was paid by the company, it's not, it comes out of the employee's checks. So it's like part of disability, basically, I didn't know, I didn't know that, and you can space it out. If you got a parent or somebody you need to take care of, you can space it out anyway, so that's a good law. Oh, one other law. That we have to find out from Alan is, now they came out a law saying you can't advertise saying must have valid California I D.
Yeah.
So I need to clarify with Alan, at what point can you bring that up? Because we can't hire somebody. To work in the field that doesn't have a driver's license, so at what point can we bring that up? So. What are these stupid laws that we have to get around and figure out?
That one I heard about, and it's because I wanna be a school teacher. And I don't, I don't need a dra- a, a driver's license in order to sit in a classroom.
Yeah.
But in order, if, if you're gonna be driving a vehicle, if you're gonna be driving the school bus, then they, you have to show your I D.
So I need to find out if I can still advertise that way for field workers.
Yeah, sure you can, cuz they're gonna have to drive.
But I don't think we'd be able to advertise that way for like our office. Actually, we would, because our front office is required to drive to the.
They, they never do, they'd never take the truck.
They don't take the war vehicles, okay, so then, yeah.
Yeah, no, there's just, you have to, you have to figure out what their attorney says. It's like asking about a past felony, a criminal past, you can't ask that at the interview anymore. You could only ask that after you've offered a job, and then you have to give a reason why their conviction has hindered you from hiring them, so. That's my point with bringing up the, the California driver's license. At what point can I ask them if they have a driver's license?
Okay, this is a super short one, and I'll just read the title and we can move on.
Quick, quick questions, does that have anything to do with we require people to live? In this district?
I don't think so, I think it's the driver.
Okay.
So this one prohibits employers for, from requiring an employee to attend a meeting that promotes a political or religious message. We don't do that, but there you go.
We don't do that anymore, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of.
And then there's gonna be a free that's gonna go to Alan.
Yeah. At least over time.
Okay, so any other questions on nineteen? No? Item twenty, discussion about informing, reforming, or dissolving ad hoc committees. I think maybe we should start, because the other one's gonna be a longer discussion, maybe we should start with this, um, sta- standby. The, or at least rate study ad hoc.
Okay.
Who wants to be on the ad hoc committee?
Could have to be somebody that's familiar with finances. With the, with the rate study, it's wholly contingent upon information from the finances, so that's my recommendation.
So Lisa and Terry, you wanna be on it?
Well, no, I'm just, you know, I mean, I'm willing, but, but, you know, I'm giving other people an opportunity, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah. I can do it. I mean, Brahma and I can do it. I mean, I know that you're like, oh, my God, another one? But you're gonna have to trust us to do it then. And so you want, you want Brahma or me?
Okay, I make, I, okay, I make a motion. Please be seconded. I make a motion that we, we form an ad hoc committee for the rate study with Lisa Schoenberg and Terry Kelling. Is there a second?
Anybody ask if people were willing? Are you willing, Lisa? Are you? Terry says she's willing. That, that's the number one key. Are you willing or do you want?
I'm willing to do it. It's fine.
I'll second it. Any other discussion?
Well, uh, okay, we'll call the directors, but I have to recuse myself. Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director Nyman.
Aye.
Director, uh, Gibson.
Abstain.
Director Kelling.
I have to abstain.
You can't, yeah, you can't abstain or we can't vote.
Well, then.
Did you just interrupt a vote?
Yes, because.
Is that? Is that, is that a point of order thing?
Well, I'm just saying then it fails.
Then it should fail and then you can redo anything you wanna redo.
Well, then how do you vote? You abstain, so.
I would abstain.
So the vote becomes two and with three abstentions.
Yes.
Yeah, so it doesn't pass.
So it didn't pass.
Okay, so it doesn't pass.
Now you gotta come up plan B.
So, do you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the ad hoc committee for the, um, rate study should Brahma, Nyman, and, um, Terry Kelling do.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll call the director unless there's a discussion. We'll call directors. Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director, uh, Gibson.
Aye.
Director Kelling.
Abstain.
Director, uh, uh, Nyman.
Abstain.
Director Schoenberg's an aye, so that's, uh, three, zero, uh, two abstentions. The motion passes.
Don't hate me now, man.
Okay, so do we have any other ad hocks that we need to reform or form or whatever? Yeah.
Bring up a motion.
Um, because they were saying, you got, Tiffany was saying that the financial ad hoc is going too far, I mean, too long.
Oh, as opposed to a standing.
So in your opinion, do we need to make it a standing committee or a standing meeting?
It would, or. Wouldn't be a standing because standings have to meet at the same time, staying.
Okay.
Stay every month.
So what do we do?
So the financial.
It was only, yeah, it was only my suggestion for project and for, um, financial.
Right.
That when they need to meet, that it's voted on as a specific. So if the financial committee's working on a budget, it's not the financial committee. You form a budget committee. I'm saying it's more specific.
Right.
You do the budget and then you dissolve the committee. So as opposed to an open-ended one that meets whenever.
Some financial.
Something comes up, you just form a committee when something comes up.
So then I'm, I move that we dissolve the financial, uh, ad hoc.
And it was a suggestion, not a. Can she make that move?
Oh, no, because I'm on it.
No, she, that, no, she can't. You just can't vote yourself onto a committee. You can, you can dissolve if you want. It's a, it's a money thing.
Right, okay. I, I move that we dissolve the, um, the financial ad hoc.
I second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? We'll call the directors.
So just to be clear, so we're dissolving it, so that means that like at the next meeting, if we have, if something comes up, then we would vote again to like put Lisa and Terry for, for, for a budget committee or for a specific whatever, whatever the subject is.
Right, whoever you want for whatever subject.
All right.
But do you have to add it to the standing meeting?
I'm.
No.
Okay. Got it.
No, because the standing meeting is specific.
Okay.
And since, you know, we put the agendas out on Monday, you have four days and you'll know if something comes up.
Financial was added for two reasons, one of which we never finished and the other which um, we did finish, which was doing all of the, um, back, uh, audit issues.
Right.
So the part that we didn't finish.
So the easements and the district. So form a district own property slash easement committee and keep going. It would just be then when you finish.
Specific committee.
Yeah, and then when you finish that task, then you finish the task. As opposed to.
Did the board okay that? Has it, was it brought before the board?
What?
Did you do, did you do a, a study about the easements and?
No, we were doing it under the financial. That's why I'm saying we need to get rid of the financial.
Hmm.
And then we can then do, we, because we can form other ones right now.
Yeah.
But we gotta get rid of this one and then narrow everything.
Okay, isn't there a motion on the floor right now?
There is, but we, we lost Director Garcia. Take a break.
Okay, I'm gonna move that we take a five, uh, I can't move, I understand motion when we take a five-minute break.
I'll move that we make a, take a five-minute break.
I'll second it.
Okay, the discussion, Director Garcia is currently absent. Director Nyman.
Aye.
Director Gibson.
Aye.
Director Kelling.
Aye.
Director Schoenberg is an aye. That's four, zero, zero, one. Uh, that just walks back in.
So let's.
Should we take the five-minute break?
No.
Okay.
Resent them.
I rescind my motion.
Okay.
You rescind your second?
No, she rescinds her second.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Hopefully it wasn't bad news.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, uh, with a second, which is to dissolve the financial ad hoc. Is there any other discussion about this before I take a roll call? Look. Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director Nyman.
Aye.
Director Gibson.
Aye.
Director Kelling.
Aye.
Director.
Oh, I can't.
No, you can, I, oh, okay. We're dissolving, okay.
Schoenberg is. Abstaining. Um.
Okay, but motion carries.
Motion carries four, zero, one abstention.
Okay.
The financial ad hoc is dissolved.
I make, I make a motion that we create an ad hoc committee with Director Schoenberg and Director Kelly to, to work on the property and easements.
Easements and deeds.
Easements and deeds.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Okay, uh, we'll call directors. Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director, uh, Nyman.
Aye.
Director Gibson.
Aye.
Director Kelling.
Abstain.
Director Schoenberg's an abstain. That motion passes three, zero, two abstentions. And so there is now a, what are we calling it? Just to confuse me here. What's that?
Ad hoc. Easements and deeds.
Easements and deeds.
Easements and deeds.
Okay. So we need to make sure that Deborah gets all these new names because it's just gonna make it like more confusing.
He's on to him. He's on to.
Okay.
Okay.
So do we need to do any more, Anthony?
The project. Project.
The project.
So I, I have a question though, because the project stuff comes up like, so how are we gonna deal with that? It's, it comes up very, like at the last second.
That Dee needs to talk to them about the land rights and this or that.
Should it be tied to the projects, like an ad hoc for each project? And then when the project's done, then that ad hoc dissolves?
And a meter ad hoc, is that what you're saying? Like that each project?
Because there's certain things that come up out of the blue.
That makes sense.
Right now, all we got is the pipeline and, uh, the Lake The Woods.
And then we, then the meters done.
Meters.
But it's going away. It's almost done.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, the wells are, uh.
Okay, I make a motion that we, uh, dissolve the project ad hoc committee. I'll second that.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the floor? Okay, we'll call directors. Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director Diamond.
Aye.
Director Gibson.
Aye.
Director Kelling.
Aye.
Director Schoenberg's an aye. That motion passes five, zero, zero.
So.
Planning project ad hoc, is that what you're gonna call it?
Yes, so I, I can't, I can't make the motion though because we, we and Lisa are on it, so. Someone wants to make a motion? That we establish.
Not allowed to, or I would.
Okay, we're gonna call it the planning project. I move that we put Brahma Nyman and Lisa Schoenberg on the planning ad hoc, planning project, the planning project ad hoc.
So at the point where we go to construction, it could be a separate.
Well, we'll deal with that at that time. So, roll call.
Okay, uh, I have a mo-, uh, sorry, guys. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Who is the second?
Terry Garcia.
Garcia, okay.
Okay, uh, roll call directors. Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director Gibson.
Aye.
Director Kelling.
Aye.
Director, uh, Diamond.
Abstain.
Director Schoenberg is an abstain. That motion passes three, zero, two abstentions for a planning project ad hoc.
Okay, now we need another one for.
Pipeline.
The pipeline. I moved that. You vote on that one, too?
Do we need one? Yeah.
We don't need one. Yeah, we don't need one, yeah.
Need it because it's not even.
So it is a whole lot.
It's not even a project yet.
Yeah, we just hold off on that.
And I don't think we need it unless there's an emergency for the thing that we're closing out. So, and we already have a standby and a rate study, so I think.
I think we're good.
Everything.
I did.
Now, my, my other question is, we're gonna have to leave this on there every month.
Of course.
Because if we need to form one, it has, there has to be that line item.
It has to be there, yeah.
We can put it just like we put future agenda. We'll just stick it on the bottom and it'll.
It'll just be there, yeah.
Be there for, on both meetings.
Yes.
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 Because we don't know what may come up on either meeting, but it needs, but if we need to form one, it'd have to be that night.
Right.
So it has to be on there.
Sounds good. Let's move on.
Okay, item twenty-one, discussion about our board member position description.
Yeah.
Is there any reason to read this? Anything changed, Tiffany?
Well, we wanted to add, we wanted to add the vice, um, president is, uh, supposed to be the at.
Parliamentarian.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't put that on there.
No, because you were gonna tell me anything you wanted to add or take away. And then I was gonna make the change.
So I think.
So under vice president, the parliamentarian?
Yes.
Is called what?
Parliamentarian.
Okay.
That's to keep us on topic.
Then you guys were gonna review it and see if there's anything else.
Can we just read through this and see if something pops up?
We can.
Would we?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, president, one, to preside chair at all board and director meetings. A, call the meeting to order. Ensure public comments are limited to five minutes. Keep the meeting moving through the items on the agenda. State motion, Sally. Announce the results of the vote. Announce if meeting extension is needed. Um, uh, F, adjourn the meeting, um. Call, uh, to call special emergency meetings as necessary. To sign documents as needed as authorized representative of the district. Sign checks as needed. Take, take, uh, check payments to post office immediately.
That's president is not.
No, no, wait.
Of the treasure.
Yeah, yeah, hang on, yeah.
Well, that's not what's been happening because it's been the sacred.
The sacred, well, what I'm saying is we could add that. I mean, I think, I, I think, first of all, that we should be, we should add also, you know, like, um, announce meeting extension. Um, I mean, don't, don't we wanna have everybody have the ability to do that if no one's paying attention? You know that.
Well, you just tell the board, president, they need to announce it. That's.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah, that's fine.
You have to call for a vote.
Yeah, but what I meant is anybody, any other board member could say, hey, Lisa, we need to extend the meeting, and then you would call for a vote. You don't have to be adding all of them.
Yeah, cuz, yeah, okay. Um. But taking.
I, I think Brahma's right though, cuz I, the president doesn't announce if a meeting extension is needed. Yes, you do.
It could be.
Yeah, I guess.
You're the one who takes the vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I take the vote, but I, I have to have a motion from the floor, but I could entertain a motion, so that's, uh, thanks, Doran.
Okay, so taking payments to the post office.
I think, I think.
Yes?
Good. I'm gonna go.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Um, I think taking payments to the post office immediately should be on everybody's because, uh, I think everybody should be able to do that.
But there has to be an order of who does.
By order, you can't be ordered to.
Because otherwise, there's no point of accountability. Like, if it's everybody, then who's gonna do it this?
Oh, I thought you did it, Brahma. Yeah, but I thought Terry did it.
Yeah, it's not good. It needs to be, it needs to be something like, like the president or the secretary. Somebody does it in the absence of the treasurer, then someone does it in the absence of the treasurer and the secretary. Someone does it in the.
Well, I've, I've been taking, I've been taking this to the post office because, because she, why should she go to the post office and then have to come back home because her house is right there? So I don't know how we wanna address that in here.
Make you this, this, the treasurer or what you, what your position is.
I'm a secretary.
Okay, we're the secretary. Treasurer or secretary shall do it.
Well, but then what, we change?
Okay, then you can change it again if you want to. It's gonna always be the secretary. It's gonna be the treasurer or private secretary if you do it.
Right, it doesn't have to be Brahma. It could be.
Where the secretary is.
Right now because you're both on the AP committee, but.
Yeah, that's true.
It could be this, it could be the secretary.
Next year, we're all.
Or it could be the vice. It could be whatever we want it to be. It just needs to be, I don't think it should be on every single.
Well, I think then secretary, if Brahma wants to keep doing it.
Well, but, but next year, he won't be secretary.
Okay, well, we worry about it next year.
He may be a member at large.
That's a whole year away to worry about it.
So we could make a motion next year, right?
And the secretary can always do it.
Or change your resolution.
We're changing this all the time, then.
Every two years?
Yeah.
Is that such a big deal?
Do you think the secretary's gonna be opposed to doing that? I don't think so. Whoever the secretary is can do it, if the treasurer can't do it. An easy task.
Okay, and take that off of, put it under secretary?
Yeah.
Yeah, so remove five.
Put it under secretary for now. Okay, um, lead the flag, salute in absence of the member at large.
I've been leading it every time.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it, in twenty nineteen, you put it as the member at large. It doesn't.
That's because Jerry was a member at large and he's really good. And he was doing it all the time, so that's why we threw it there.
I think you should just leave it under president unless the member at large feels like they're left out.
Oh, okay. Well, why don't, why don't, why don't you, why don't you have that, you lead the, the, the flag salute, the, the, the president lead the flag salute, and then the member at large will, well.
That's something that really even has to be on there? That's something that really even has to be on here?
No, but it, but it, I mean.
The board president just, that's part of the agenda, the board president runs the agenda.
Yeah, but we didn't, no, I think it should be on here, but I think it should be the opposite, I shouldn't, I think the president leads the flag salute and the member at large can do it in the absence of the president.
Oh.
Yeah, but you have a member at large?
Right now, it's back.
The JPI.
Well, no, we don't, we don't have a member at large.
It's just JPI.
No, we took that off.
Why does it have to be on here, is what I'm saying, it's part of our agenda.
The JPI off, I thought.
We're not putting, we're not putting future agenda items on there and all the rest of our agenda items, I mean, leading the flag is so simple. The board president does it as part of the agenda.
And the vice president doesn't, if the board president.
Everybody stepped in and started it.
I know, but the vice president assumes the duties of, if the president's absent.
Take it off, member, just take it off member at large and leave it on the president, because the vice president is gonna do it.
If the president's not there.
If the president's not there, because he assumes, he assumes the duties of the president, so.
What a boy loser.
I mean, so, so just get rid of that absent, just say, lead the flag salute and leave it at that, uh, under president. And then vice president assumes the duties of the president if absent, signs checks as needed.
Uh, signs checks in the absence of the president, because usually it's always the.
No, it's, it's under everybody, because we all sign checks as needed.
Because you're talking about the.
Right, yeah, yeah. And, and then you're gonna add on here, uh, vice president, um, is the parliamentarian?
Yeah.
Parliamentarian.
Yeah, parliamentarian, okay, so you add that on there, okay, secretary, sign and test all meeting minutes, sign and test the district and board documents as needed, and sign checks as needed, seems pretty clear. Treasurer, review district financial documents monthly to ensure accuracy, review invoices and checks monthly for accuracy, take check payments to the post office immediately after each meeting for mailing.
So do we just take that off and add it on yours?
Well.
No, because it's still the treasurer's job.
They would normally do it, but if they don't do it, then, then the secretary currently will do it.
Right, or, or you can put in there, uh, take check payments post up immediately after the meeting for mailing. Unless, unless.
You don't have to put that unless.
I was gonna say.
It's already on there.
Someone else.
Unless, uh, uh, unless they direct some, uh, another board member.
Oh, yeah.
You could put something like that, well, that way it's just clear.
It is clear, cuz you're supposed to do it if she doesn't.
Right.
It's already clear, you don't need to make it more clear.
I'm just trying to. Or certain.
Otherwise, she's not, I mean, he's right, because otherwise she's not fulfilling her duty by not doing it.
Right.
So it should say, it, it does need to be clear.
So just, just, just say, say, take checks to the post immediately after each meeting for mailing, unle, unless, unless.
Or assign.
Or a, or, or assign a designee.
Yeah.
Or assign a designee, yeah, designated, yeah, that's perfect. For service ju, district representative administrator for branch and online banking needs, um.
Well, you know, and, and that one is, I'm not an administrator.
No, it's still me and Brahma.
Brahma, so, because when I, I have to get on and do anything, they gotta talk to one of you guys. And I mean, and that, it just.
It probably should be.
But that means we're gonna have to redo that every year or every two years.
Yeah.
The administrator thing, and so I don't know.
So I don't, and, yeah.
But you are a representative of the district. Yes, but I'm not an administrator.
But you do, but you do go as a representative, because I don't go anymore, it's you and Brahma.
But I'm not an admin, administrator of the online stuff.
I think Brenda can do that really easily, go on the online and assign administrators.
She's, no, it's a whole.
Whole thing.
That we have to.
There's paperwork and everything.
Lots of paperwork.
Yes.
She did it for you?
She did it for me.
She puts you on as an administrator?
You're not an administrator.
Not here.
Different, different.
Oh, maybe, maybe it's a whole different ballgame over there.
So what do you wanna do about that, just leave it the way it is, or?
I, I think it should just say serve as a district representative for branch and online banking needs, and then I think we should have a separate, um, position, which is, cuz we have it as a whole separate position on that vote, is this is.
On the banking resolution.
Five, transfer funds between district councils needed, six, set up automatic transfer for USDA loan replacement and reserve requirements, and sign checks as needed. Then member at large, uh, assists other positions as needed, and sign checks as needed.
Wait, why don't we have JPI representative anymore?
Cuz you didn't do it in twenty nineteen.
So you want the member at large taken off?
Well, because we've had member, okay, we need to keep member at large, because what happens is when we get a branded board member like we've had in the past, we do not want them being treasurer or something when they ha, have no knowledge whatsoever of this board, we've made them in the past, wait six months, and then we put them into the rotation, so I think you need a member at large that isn't a signer on the accounts and all that stuff, until they've been a part of the board for long enough.
Is there a, is there a wait requirement for being a member at large?
Six months, no, there's no, no requirement for being a member at large, but there, but we have had to, frankly, um, and I don't think we should get rid of that, because you never know who's gonna, like, if somebody goes away and you get someone in here that maybe shouldn't be just right away signing stuff. You may want that.
So I'm gonna cross off the title of member at large, put JPI rep, and then the rep will assist other positions, sign checks as needed. And then member at large will be a position, but it'll be blank.
And be applied to whatever we needed to do.
And member at large would, would, then under member at large, you would only say assist other positions as needed. So that way he's learning, I mean, it is learning.
Yeah, them, them.
Them.
Watch your way with eating correct nowadays, Jerry.
You better do your correct pronouns.
Yes.
Don't wanna get.
So are you taking away, you're taking away lead the flag to the district meeting?
Right, yeah.
And then assess, uh, uh, this other position as needed and sign checks as.
Yeah, and what should JPI rep?
And, but the JPI rep also deals with JPI, so it needs to say that.
That's the reason we put JPI rep was.
Hello. That's a clue.
That would, the whole.
Okay, well, you're guiding another position.
But we're not, we're not comfortable with at large signing checks as needed, because they're not on the check signing for six months.
Right, so get rid of that.
So it's just assist other positions as needed.
Yeah, I got it, that sounds good. Right, and then on JPI rep, you know.
Okay, see, I would choose, you know.
Yeah, copy, key here.
Well, I guess it's, deal with insurance.
Deal with insurance and.
And.
Sign checks as may, as necessary.
And, it doesn't need it.
Yeah, cuz you're the main person to talk to the, I mean, it just needs to probably state, uh, that, that person's the main insurance negotiator.
Yeah, that's what the JPI rep is, right?
Yeah, that's why we got professional.
Um, assist with.
But other people.
In, 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 insure, insurance and documents.
Sharp as a tongue.
Not insurance and documents, insurance documents.
Insurance documents.
Thank you. Watch it.
And sign checks as necessary.
Wanted it.
And assist with other positions as needed.
Yeah, assist, yeah.
But.
Okay, so I make a motion that we, uh, approve, uh, the new Fraser Park Public Utility Duties of Board of Officers and adopted, uh, the ninth, January ninth, twenty twenty-five, uh, with the changes that we stated.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, is there any other discussion before we take that vote? Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director Nyman.
Aye.
Director Gibson.
Aye.
Director Kelly.
Aye.
Director Schoenberg is an aye, so that's five, zero, zero, that motion passes with the new, uh, position description. Okay, item twenty-two, review and approve meeting minutes for twelve, ten, twenty twenty-four AP standing committee, twelve, four, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, twelve, seventeen, twenty twenty-four AP standing committee, twelve, nineteen, twenty twenty-four state update standing committee, twelve, nineteen, twenty twenty-four regular state planning and projects meeting.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve, uh, twelve, ten, twenty, twenty-four AP standing committee, meeting, twelve, twelve, twenty-four regular meeting, twelve, seventeen, twenty-four AP standing committee, twelve, nineteen, twenty twenty-four state update standing committee, and twelve, nineteen, twenty twenty-four regular state planning and project meeting minutes, uh, with, uh, any, with any of the amendments that were sensitively previous to and after the meeting, as well as any additional amendments or typos or other errors that we may or may not have caught or need to be corrected.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on that? Roll call directors, Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director Nyman.
Aye.
Director Gibson.
Abstaining.
Director Kelly.
Aye.
Director Schoenberg is an aye, that's four, zero, one abstention. And, uh, we're on twenty-three, discussion vote on future agenda items.
No future agenda items, but I just wanna say, this is my anniversary of being your clerk of the board. I've now been your clerk of the board for ten years.[1713.44]